All right, let me get things straight here. The Workshop Council Meeting for the City of Copperscove held October 7th, 2025. It's called to order at 5:01 PM. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mayor Yancey?
Here.
Christina Strophas?
Here.
Rita Hogan?
Here.
Sean Alzona? John Hale?
Here.
Del Chudway?
Here.
Vanya Hart?
Here.
Jack Smith?
Here.
All right, at Quorum, Mr. President, we go to Item C, announcements.
None from me, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, the Cove House is celebrating our 30th anniversary this year, and we're having a banquet on November 1st. Tickets are available and tables are available at covehouse.org. Thank you.
Yes, sir. This past Saturday, we had National Night Out Block Party Downtown. It was a fantastic event. It was a lot of fun, and just want to say thank you to Crystal Baker, who really spearheaded the organization of that. Crystal, you did amazing. So tonight is the National Night Out Block Parties, which are occurring through town. So if you're out, you see a party, go have fun and meet your neighbors, meet the law enforcement individuals that are protecting and caring for our community. This Saturday, the Fire Department is hosting an open house at Central Station that begins at 9:00 AM at Central Station. That's right next to the Copperscove Public Library. And then the Historical Society is actually hosting the Ogletree Gap Heritage Festival out at Ogletree. That begins at 10:00 AM. Thank you, Mayor.
Is that it?
That's it.
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Nothing, sir. Vanya?
Yes, I just would like to announce the Friends of Central Texas State Veteran Cemetery, Reefs for Vets will be doing their annual reefer preparation on Saturday, November 22nd at 10:00 AM. Reefering ceremony Saturday, November 29th at 10:00 AM, and reefer retrieval Saturday, January 10th, 2026 at 10:00 AM. And if you want more information, please visit www.vet, ah, excuse me, reefsforvets.org. Thank you.
Okay, Jack?
No announcements.
All right, we move to Item D, public recognition.
Item one, Employee Service Awards, October 2025. Ryan Havela, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, it's the beginning of the month, and we get to recognize some of our amazing team members. And we are going to start with Ronnie Gass, who is celebrating 10 years of service within our Fleet Services Department. He is a lead mechanic. Ronnie began, there we go, look at that. Ronnie began his career with the City of Copperscove on October 13, 2015, when he was hired as a mechanic in the Fleet Services Department. In March 2022, he was promoted to lead mechanic, a role in which he continues to proudly serve our departments and community. Ronnie brings a vast amount of mechanical knowledge, particularly in larger commercial vehicles and heavy equipment. He is highly skilled in braking systems and hydraulics, performing both minor and major repairs, as well as routine preventative maintenance that keeps city operations running smoothly. In addition to his mechanical expertise, Ronnie oversees the annual steers reporting for Fleet Services, a TCQ requirement for hazardous chemical tracking. A graduate of the city's Development and Leadership Academy Class Number Three, Ronnie continues to demonstrate strong technical ability and leadership. His supervisor noted Ronnie excels at troubleshooting vehicles utilizing the Cummins Insight Electronic Service Diagnostic Program. And Ronnie has a long way to continue demonstrating that leadership. Ronnie, thank you for your 10 years of service with the city. Next, we celebrate with Vincenzo Melatello. I hope I got that right, sir. I'm so sorry if I didn't. Is that right? Correct me. Vincenzo, all right. Y'all laughing at me? Celebrating 10 years of service with our police department. Vincenzo, known to many as Jim. What? It's a long story. We don't have time, I guess. Began his career with the City of Copperscove on October 5, 2015, when he was hired as a patrol officer in the police department. He was promoted to police corporal in October 2018, and his position was later reclassified to police sergeant in October 2019. Jim holds a T. Cole Master Peace Officer Certification, firearms instructor certification, and an instructor certification. In addition to his patrol duties, he serves as a member of the department's SWAT team, a firearms instructor, and alert instructor, which is Advanced Law Enforcement Rapid Response Training, and a field training officer. Jim is known for his reliability, consistently adjusting his schedule to provide coverage and support across multiple shifts. In his recent evaluation, his supervisor noted Sergeant Melatello does well by monitoring what officers are doing and corrects them as needed. He effectively communicates with his subordinates and keeps officers motivated while practicing good teamwork methods on shift. And I got to say, I was able to, well, I don't know that I completely ran it, but got to run in a 10K with the SWAT team, and Jim was quite the encourager. So Jim, thank you for your 10 years of service to our city. Next, we celebrate with Michaela Ortega, celebrating 10 years of service also. Michaela was hired by the City of Copperscove as a patrol officer in the police department on October 5, 2015. She was promoted to police corporal in October 2018, and her position was reclassified to police sergeant in October 2019. Michaela holds a T. Cole Advanced Peace Officer Certification and an instructor certification. She serves at the department's Crisis Negotiations Team and is recognized for her reliability and attention to detail. She consistently completes assignments accurately and on time with minimal supervision, effectively manages her workload, and is always willing to assist when needed. Her attendance record is exemplary, reflecting her commitment and professionalism. Michaela also achieved a score of 75 on her most recent physical readiness test, exceeding the department's current standard. Her supervisor noted in a recent evaluation that Sergeant Ortega can be relied upon to be present and fully engaged during her shift. She has a keen ability to identify areas where newer officers may be lacking and promptly takes corrective actions to enhance their performance and development. Michaela, thank you for 10 years of service to our city and community. And next, we celebrate with Richard Williams, celebrating 25 years of service within the police department. Richard, also known as Rick to everybody, was hired by the City of Copperscove as a communications operator in the police department on October 21, 2020, excuse me, 20, 2000, excuse me, sorry, Rick, and has proudly served the community for 25 years. And I just want to point out, that is a quarter of a century. So you started really young, Rick. Really young. Rick was recognized as the Communications Operator of the Year in 2006 by the Copperscove Crime Stoppers Organization for his exceptional service. He also once received a corporal's coin for his actions during a rollover car accident, and Rick's expertise as a dispatcher has been a significant asset to the department. He is often the first to learn new equipment and programs researching manuals and mastering systems independently. Rick consistently supports newer communications operators and has increased his presence during community events over the past few years. In his spare time, he actively participates in the city's COFIT Wellness Program. His supervisor noted in a recent evaluation, Rick's judgment is never questioned, and I don't say that lightly. I have complete faith in his decisions. He can be depended on to solve problems without seeking the advice of others. He is professional to the citizens of the city and has built a rapport with them to the point that many know who he is and how he operates. Rick is a staple of the dispatch office. The City of Copperscove commends Rick for his exceptional dedication, professionalism, and invaluable service to the police department and our community. And I just want to point out that as a dispatcher, you are that connection between those in the most critical moment of their life up to that point and getting the help to them. And so 25 years is a long time to be in that role. Rick, thank you for your dedicated service to our city and community.
All right, we move to Item Two.
Retirement Recognition. Ryan Havela, City Manager.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Mayor and Council, we have, at this point, we have done a lot of recognitions for Chief Gary Young, but we are going to celebrate officially this one last time. Chief Young has retired from the Copperscove Fire Department after 36 years of service. And I think that, right there, just should receive an applause immediately. So Gary began his career with the City of Copperscove on September 23, 1989, as a fire recruit one. He earned his firefighter EMT certification in 1990 and paramedic certification in 1993. Promotions followed to fire lieutenant in December of 1994, to deputy fire chief in July of 2009, and finally to fire chief in February of 2023, where he proudly served until his retirement and on September 23 of this year. And just to put that in perspective, that is three and a third decade, excuse me, three and a half decades. So Gary consistently fostered professionalism, teamwork, and compassion across departments with volunteers and with various regional and state partnerships. His knowledge of fire and EMS standards, coupled with his leadership in helping to implement the 4896 work schedule for the fire department, strengthened the department and improved operations. In addition to leading the fire department, Gary also served as emergency management coordinator, guiding the city through floods, wildfires, hurricane responses, winter storms, a tornado, and even that global pandemic that we all now call COVID-19 just a few years ago. In many situations, Gary was actually the calm during that storm. Gary earned his bachelor's degree summa cum laude, whoa, yeah, in fire and emergency administration with a homeland security concentration from Texas A&amp;M San Antonio in 2019. And in April of 2022, he received the Mount Hiram Masonic Lodge's prestigious Community Builder Award, a very prestigious award. Gary's, Gary, excuse me, Chief Young's outstanding knowledge has helped the fire department and the city deliver quality service and maintain readiness in all situations through his entire career. Many of us, many of Gary's coworkers have received a lot from you, Gary, over 36 years. You have mentored a lot of firefighters. You've also mentored a lot of other team members throughout our city, but also throughout our region, and a lot of people relied on you. So we wish you and your family the very best after this retirement. And I know you've already been enjoying it. And so with that, Mayor and Council, we have a few items that we want to present to Gary. The first one is, I'm actually going to give you money. Yeah. And then we're going to present his picture, and then the mayor will present his item.
This is Chief Young's picture.
Mayor, Council, City Manager, and everybody here, anybody watching, thank you so much. It has been an honor to serve this community for the last 36 years. It's actually 36 and a half, but I started as a volunteer firefighter in March of 1989, and a good friend of mine, Brian Keane, was the one who drug me in and said, hey, come try this out. And I never left. So thank you. I do appreciate it, and good luck to everybody.
Mayor and Council, Gary's coming up to receive your congratulations as well.
All right, we move on to Item Three.
Recognition of Citizens Leadership Academy graduates. Kevin Keller, Public Relations Director.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. So this evening, we're going to recognize these fine, amazing, beautiful young people you see in the front row here in the green shirts. This is the Citizens Leadership Academy Class Two. Just a little background, with the City Council's direction, Citizens Leadership Academy inaugural class was created and completed in 2024. Following much success, class number two is presented this current year from August 7th through September 25th. Class Two consisted of 11 participants, all coming to us from various backgrounds, life, and work experiences. This class included local community partners and business professionals, business owners, engaged community members, retirees, and even a couple of our own team's family members. The participants spent 20-plus hours with us over the course of eight weeks, where they received insight into day-to-day operations of the various local city government services. To successfully complete the course, participants may miss no more than two classes, and they must attend both a City Council workshop and a City Council regular meeting. You may recognize their faces because several of them have been very engaged in attending the recent meetings. 10 of the 11 participants had perfect attendance. Overall, the class had a 98.9% attendance rate, and all participants have met the requirements necessary for graduation this evening. I've asked two lucky participants to come forward to share a few thoughts on the academy, so I'd like to welcome Ms. Beth Galick-Carny first.
Thank you, Kevin. Good evening, everyone, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Havela. Gosh, so my role with the Chamber of Commerce, I work with a lot of departments with the city already, but one thing that I found very, very valuable about going through the Leadership Academy is, of course, learning about all the departments that I don't work with, but most of all, learning about the people behind the departments, how hard they work and how much they care about the city, and everything that they do, they put their heart and soul into. I know that as a citizen, sometimes when things don't go the way we think they should through the city, it's easy to forget that there are really great people working behind each department, and they want the best for their city, just like we do. So I think that's the most valuable thing I got out of it.
Thank you for sharing those comments. Now I'm going to invite Ms. Cecilia or Ms. Rosa, one of them's going to come up here and speak. They may come together, I'm not sure. Ms. Rosie Young?
I'll be her support. This is my sister Cecilia. I'm Rosie Young. I want to thank my son Gary. He's the one that told us about the academy, and we attended the graduation last year, and I was really interested in it. So I was really excited to be able to see all the departments and what they do, and just amazed at how dedicated they are. And everybody loves her job. I was like, yes, we live in an awesome city. And I just enjoyed every meeting that we went to. You can tell I got in. Well, I got drugged here, so. When they asked me why I came, I says, I don't know, I was told to come. But I really, really enjoyed it. I think I've made some friends with my sister here, and I'm really excited about volunteering. I think that that's one of the things that was shown to us, you know, that there are several departments where you can become a volunteer. I think my sister wants to do the animal department, which I'll probably be drugged there too, but I'm interested in the police department where you call in the shut-ins. And again, I think that everybody that, all the departments that gave presentations, they just really seem to enjoy their job and, you know, really care for the city of Copperscove. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosa, Ms. Cecilia. We're glad you got drugged here. You brought a lot of life to the class. Thank you. So at this point, I'd like to ask our Mayor, City Council, City Manager, if y'all have any, many of you have attended the courses throughout the last eight weeks? If you had any comments or words of wisdom you'd like to share, I'd open that to y'all.
Don't everybody speak at once. Ladies first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you so much for your desire to serve and to learn more about our city. Hopefully, I just urge you and just ask kindly to spread that information around. There's a lot of people in our community that is unaware about how things are run, how things function. So just that information can go a long way. I love knowledge, and I'm glad that you guys were able to gain that. I'm glad you guys had fun. I'm glad you guys had snacks and food. But it was always nice to come, when I did, was able to make it and come there, it was nice to see you all there and engage in conversation. So congratulations, and again, thank you so much for serving and coming. Thank you.
What else?
I just want to thank all y'all for participating, and I agree with everything Mayor Pro Tem, Vanya Hart said.
Sound like a ditto. I would just like to say that, you know, this is called Leadership Academy because this is the birthplace of future leaders, and everybody here makes a difference in our city. And I think one of the things that was mentioned was volunteerism. That is so important and so vital to the success of any city is your volunteerism. And the more that you know, the more that you can help. And I certainly appreciate everybody taking the time to be involved in city government, city business, how it works, and how it works correctly. Thank you.
Okay, graduates, thank you for attending, and congratulations on graduating. Here, I'm going to challenge y'all. Don't let it stop here. You are some of the most educated citizens about city operations now that you've gone through the academy. And we've already talked about volunteerism, and that's great, but you have connection points that our team, even the council members, will never have. And now you have the opportunity to help spread factual information or make the direct connections that don't exist right now. So don't let it stop here. Keep pushing that education, that information, and that encouragement, and those connections further beyond you. Congratulations.
Okay, thank y'all for sharing those kind words. So at this point, I'm going to ask the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and City Manager, if y'all will come down here. We're going to present certificates. Mayor Pro Tem, Vanya Hart, is the City Council liaison to the academy, so she's going to participate in this process, and we're going to award certificates. So here's what we're going to do. When I call your name, you're going to come over here and you're going to stand. There's a piece of blue tape on the floor. If you'll stand there on that blue tape and then look for Anna. Anna, raise your hand. Look for Anna, because she's going to be taking your picture. Family members, you're more than welcome to come up and take photos also, but we are going to post these to the city's Facebook page tonight, so you can grab them off there if you'd like to. Now, City Manager gave Gary Young a retirement gift of money. Y'all aren't receiving money tonight. I want to be very clear. Our first graduate is Ms. Michelle Atkins. Our next, our next graduate, Ms. Shelby Carroll. Unfortunately, could not be with us this evening due to a family emergency, Ms. Bettina Cash. Mr. Matthew Coolman. Ms. Sherlene Fincher. Ms. Beth Galick-Carny. Ms. Jill Holmes. Ms. Cecilia Moreno-Shatwell. And unfortunately, could not be with us this evening due to a family emergency, Mr. Andy Remedies. Ms. Melody Squires. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Rosie Young. Okay, congratulations, y'all don't take off, we're going to do a group photo here in a minute. But the participants were asked to each select a department which they felt was deserving of being recognized for the best presentation. It was not public relations sadly for the second year in a row. While votes were cast for multiple departments, the one receiving the most votes is the, drum roll, Copper's Cove Fire Department. So I'd like to welcome Deputy Chief Steven Clendenin and retired Fire Chief Gary Young come on up as they were the ones who made the presentation. And that comes with no monetary incentive either. As the city manager said, it doesn't stop here. I too encourage you and challenge you to stay engaged in what's going on in your community. We're a phone call away, if y'all need anything, please contact us. Please share the word for next year's academy, we're doing a Class III next summer. And just know that you're valued and appreciated and thank you for choosing to spend the time with us because you didn't have to. So we're going to take a group photo up front here after one round of applause and we'll do a group photo up here.
Proclamation, Crime Prevention Month 2025, Dan D'Yancy, Mayor.
City of Copper's Cove proclamation, whereas the vitality of our city depends on how safe we keep our homes, neighborhoods, schools, workplaces and communities because crime and fear of crime diminish the quality of life for all. And whereas people of all ages must be made aware of what they can do to prevent themselves, their families, neighbors and coworkers from being harmed by violence, drugs and other crime. And whereas crime prevention initiatives must include and go beyond self-protection and security to promote collaborative efforts to make neighborhoods safer for all ages and to develop positive educational and recreational opportunities for young people. And whereas effective crime prevention programs excel because of partnerships among law enforcement, other government agencies, civic groups, schools, faith communities, businesses and individuals as they help to nurture communal responsibility and instill pride. Whereas crime prevention initiatives, did I miss something? Here we go. Thank you for that cursor there, okay. Now, I therefore, Dan Yancy, Mayor of City of Copper's Cove, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Crime Prevention Month 2025 in the City of Copper's Cove and I urge all citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions and businesses to invest in the power of prevention and work together for the common good.
City Council, Mr. Haverlaw. On behalf of the Copper's Cove Police Department, I just want to say that we appreciate our city leadership and our community for the support. Crime prevention truly is a team effort and we are very proud to serve alongside all of you who care just as much about the safety of our city as we do. So thank you very much.
Item five, proclamation code compliance month, Dan D'Yancy, Mayor.
City of Copper's Cove proclamation, whereas code compliance officers provide for the safety, health and welfare of the citizens of the City of Copper's Cove through the enforcement of local codes and ordinances facing various issues of building, zoning, housing, environmental, health and life safety. And whereas code compliance officers frequently have a challenging and demanding role for oftentimes, and oftentimes do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving living and working conditions for residents and businesses of local communities. And whereas code compliance officers are dedicated and highly qualified professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing and ensuring safety and preserving property values through knowledge and application of housing, zoning and nuisance codes and ordinances. And whereas code compliance officers are called upon to provide quality customer service and excellence to the residents and businesses of the community of which they serve. And whereas the month of October observance provides the opportunity to highlight the contributions these individuals have made in the quality of our community and to recognize the participation and dedication of code compliance officers who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the City of Copper's Cove. Now therefore, I, Dan Yancy, Mayor of the City of Copper's Cove, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as code compliance month in the City of Copper's Cove, Texas. And I urge each and every citizen to extend their appreciation to code compliance officers and staff for their outstanding service and dedication.
Thank you, council members, city manager, we do appreciate this. We have a wonderful team that works hard in code compliance. Sometimes you don't see it, but we are doing stuff. Our motto is, you never see what we're not doing, you're not seeing what we're doing, but you do see what we're not getting to. And, but we do strive, we have a wonderful team that works hard. We have great leadership in Copper's Cove that reflects onto our workmanship as well. So we do appreciate this and we do not take this lightly. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
Item six, proclamation National Chamber of Commerce Day 2025, Dan D'Yancy, Mayor.
City of Copper's Cove proclamation, whereas chambers of commerce across the United States have long served as vital advocates for business, commerce and community prosperity, providing leadership and vision to strengthen local economies and foster civic engagement. And whereas the City of Copper's Cove Chamber of Commerce established in 1956 has continuously worked to advance the welfare and prosperity of the Copper's Cove area by supporting businesses, promoting tourism, encouraging community connection and strengthening partnerships with local government, schools, military families and residents. And whereas the chamber has embraced innovation by modernizing services for its members, enhancing communication, creating new programs and collaborating with community, okay, when she flips and misses it. There we go. There we go. Enhancing communications, creating new programs and collaborating with community partners because together we build more than business. And whereas National Chamber of Commerce Day is observed annually on the third Wednesday of October, which this year falls on October 15th, 2025, recognizing and celebrating the important role chambers play in communities across America, including right here in Copper's Cove. Now therefore, I, Dan Yancy, Mayor of Copper's Cove, Texas, do hereby and declare and proclaim October 15th, 2025 as National Chamber of Commerce Day 2025 in Copper's Cove, Texas. And I encourage all citizens to recognize and support the Copper's Cove Chamber of Commerce for its commitment to strengthening our community, supporting our businesses and leading with innovation.
I just want to say thank you so much for this, we really appreciate it. We've been working really hard over the last two years to make some major changes at the Chamber of Commerce and we're not stopping. So thank you so much for this recognition and I do really appreciate it, so thank you
Mayor Yancy, if it pleases you, I'd like to go back to recognition number two, Mr. Gary Young's retirement celebration, if that's right? Okay, so we have a representative here from Senator Flores's office who would also like to present to Chief Young. Mr. Chip Howell.
Thank you and thank you for the grace of allowing me to be a little late today. This is from Senator Pete Flores. Whereas Gary Young retired as chief of the Copper's Cove Fire Department on September 23rd, 2025, drawing to a close 36 years of exemplary service as a firefighter. And whereas Chief Young first joined Copper's Cove Fire Department on September 23rd, 1989 and he served the department in multiple roles, including emergency management coordinator before his promotion to fire chief on February 6th, 2023. In the course of his tenure, he fostered a culture of professionalism and acted as a mentor to those who, to the next generation of firefighters. And whereas along the way, Chief Young continued his professional development, earning certificates as master firefighter, master officer, I'm sorry, master fire instructor, licensed paramedic, fire service chief executive officer and fire executive. And he received a bachelor's degree. I think it's the bifocals. And he received a bachelor's degree from Texas A&amp;M University, San Antonio. His contributions have been recognized with a Community Builder Award from Mount Herem Lodge Number 595. And whereas Chief Gary Young's hard work, professionalism and commitment to excellence have earned him the admiration and appreciation of the citizens of Copper's Cove and he is indeed deserving of the recognition of his exemplary service, now therefore be it resolved that Fire Chief Gary Young be congratulated on his retirement from the Copper's Cove Fire Department and that he be extended sincere best wishes for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Howell, appreciate you making it here. And if we can have all of the city director of leadership come on up to the front with retired Fire Chief Gary Young, we're going to take a quick photo with you and the council. Come on up here to the center, sir.
Discuss and provide direction regarding the creation of a street maintenance utility and associated fees as necessary to fix and perpetually maintain the city's current and future street network.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city manager and the rest of city council. No pun intended when I say it's a long road that has led us back here for discussion. We want to talk about, continue the discussion on the city's proposed street maintenance utility tonight and get some direct feedback from city council based on the public engagement campaign that has transpired over the last, last month. So with that, I want to go over just some of the metrics relating to those town halls and that public engagement that we saw in the month of September. We had, as you recall, seven town hall meetings. Three of those were commercial or geared towards commercial customers and the other four were geared towards residential customers. Out of the seven meetings, there were a total of 298 citizens that actually attended in this room as a briefing was presented to more further explain what the street maintenance utility is and the goals behind this potential program to ultimately work towards fixing the city's streets. In addition to the town halls, we held various different civic club presentations. So far, we've held five and that's typically Ryan and myself, Kevin Keller or Anna attend as well. And we sit down with groups such as the Rotary Club, El Trusa, the Noon Exchange Club. We also have one final one of those tomorrow, I believe at noon, and that's the Young at Hearts Group. But in total so far, we have reached out and basically provided presentations, addressed questions related to the street maintenance utility and spread really what the purpose of this and what the city's goals are relating to its transportation network. We obviously had other public engagements. This included individual in-depth discussions with a look into what this program currently looks like and where it may be going in the future. So the summary of comments, complaints, and recommendations, we've provided this list. I apologize, this presentation didn't get to you until about noon today, so I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look at that. However, as many of, many members of this council were actually at those town hall meetings, if not one, all seven in some instances, some of you were there, and you heard firsthand what the community's concerns were about this program. These have been summarized here, but really, the big one at the top there, affordability for small business is the number one concern. The high rate structure could force closure, sale, or relocation. We heard this multiple times through the Q&amp;A sessions following those town halls. Relating to those question-and-answer periods at those town halls, Ryan and myself, we stayed until the questions were done, until there were no other questions at that time. Those questions were followed up again by individualized emails as those came in as well. There is a list of other concerns here, and Mr. Havelaw, you kind of put this summary together. Is there anything you'd like to highlight here?
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Mayor and Council, I just want to highlight the top two points, because we heard these numerous times, and that is affordability for small businesses is the number one concern. Several comments were made that this was going to put businesses out of business. And so that's, I think you all heard that in a number of the meetings that you attended as well. The second one, though not heard nearly as frequently as the first one, but residents on fixed incomes worry about that $10 per month fee as well. And so those are the two big ones. You can always look through all the rest of those, and we can have discussions about them if necessary. On page two, I also wanted to point out, because I really want to make it clear that we have been very transparent through this process, including putting a summary of the comments on there. So right in the middle there, it says desire for transparency, and that there were a number of comments made about mismanagement, corruption, not utilizing funds properly, which is the mismanagement piece. So I just want to make it very transparent that we've included all of those comments in this discussion and in this presentation as well. So if council has any questions about any of these items or wants to discuss any of these specific, we can. But as you attended these meetings, you've probably read about it, this is a pretty good consensus of all those comments, questions, complaints, and recommendations.
And with that, Mr. Havelaw also compiled the top public recommendations received, and I will go through those just to kind of set the stage for the rest of the presentation that will follow. The first one is to reduce and cap the non-residential rates substantially, consider a lower residential rate as well. There was repeated calls for the street just not to move forward with this program due to its impacts. The third one, establish a business committee to study the plan and bring recommendations. Allow local traffic studies that exclude storage, non-customer areas, and refined categories. Strengthen our transparency and accountability. Consider hybrid funding with a modest fee plus additional sales tax dedication plus bonds and grants. And establish exemptions for nonprofits and governmental entities. With all of these recommendations in mind, one of the common discussion points that I had during individualized discussions, and we had at some of the town halls, related to, is there, you know, basically a concern out there about the condition of the city's transportation network? The majority of people acknowledged there is an issue out there. Most people further acknowledged that the city does not have sufficient resources at this point to move forward. Overwhelmingly, however, people don't like this proposal, this program as it's currently structured. So I did want to put that out there and, along with the rest of this, kind of set the stage of what we're looking at. So throughout the commercial town halls and also into the residential town halls, there was a comparison on the presentations for both residential and commercial relating to residential rates in other communities in a comparison to what City Council has moved forward in this draft. There was not, however, a non-residential comparison with the current draft. I've put that together, as you see Copper's Cove's on the left. The highlighted numbers are the current draft's amounts. You can see in the city of Colleen, the city of College Station, and the city of Waco, they are substantially less, with the exception of supermarkets, at least in Colleen and Waco across the board. With that being said, as we've discussed before, each community has a different approach to establishing these street maintenance utilities, and they use, although majority of them refer back to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Manual for trip counts, there's other things they do to those numbers before that becomes what their rates are based on. And you see that in each one of these other communities. For example, College Station basically established five tiers for non-residential units ranging from, I believe it was about $50 up to that $33.50 that you see for the 140,000-square-foot supermarket. That is their top tier in College Station. In Waco, you see other tailoring of their programs to match the needs of those individual communities, and that's what you see. But that's as of right now, the current draft that is on the table. You can see on the far left, you know, the comments we've received that were way out of line, that based on this comparison, that is a factual statement. So tonight, we have five decision points this city staff is looking for, City Council's specific direction on. They're indicated on the slide. The first decision is whether or not to continue down this path for the street maintenance utility and fee program development. The second one, if the answer to number one is yes, proceed. Will there be a residential fee adjustment? The third one, non-residential fee adjustment. The fourth one, revisit the idea of exemptions. Throughout the town halls, we did have various comments and concerns relating to types of entities and why they were not exempted from this program. The fifth one is potentially establishing a program evaluation period. Not all street maintenance utility programs in other communities have these, but a lot do. And this is really the concept of, okay, within a period of time, come back and show us, show us, City Council and the community by extension, what has been accomplished? Where has that money been spent? Some communities establish, you know, further requirements such as an audit, things of that nature. But we'll get into that as we get through this. So the first question is really the most pivotal. Decision one is the question of should we continue to move forward? I put together just a couple, a couple brief slides here, just to remind the community what we're looking at. This is the condition of the street's transportation network as of 2022, based on the pavement condition index assessment that was conducted and completed on every street segment within the city. As we saw in those town halls, basically, when you start out at green, those are the new roads. As you move down to blue, those are a little bit older. Red and orange is when you really start seeing that substandard condition. Overall, once again, back in '22, the city's overall street condition, average condition was at approximately 60 PCI out of a scale of 100. So we need to consider, as we consider this decision, what is the future of the city's street network if this accelerating trend of deterioration is not reversed, stabilized, or at least slowed? The reference to the right is a standard pavement deterioration chart, and what this is, it measures basically average condition versus age, and spells out where rehabilitation, maintenance, and things should occur on this spectrum. At the top here, this is about an 80, at least based on this deterioration chart. This is when they recommend that you need to initially investigate. Other charts similar to this start a little bit higher to get to that cracked ceiling and things of that nature. However, a 60 is right here. So you can see you're basically on this curve, and this is the accelerated decline that that network will see if there's not rehabilitation and effective maintenance of that network. So ultimately, you will move down to a, in the 30 range, the end of the optimum life, end of effective service life at 20, and basically end of usable structure life right around that 10 PCI mark. We do have, based on the assessment, various roadways that fit in these categories, but on average, we're sitting in about right here.
And Mayor and Council, I'll just add that this chart on the left, access from very good to very poor at the bottom, is inversely related to the cost to repair the condition of those roads. So as it stays in that very good condition, the cost in those areas is low, whereas it, once it drops down to those very poor conditions, the cost becomes very high.
And the last slide on, just to set the stage for this decision, is we've discussed this for about, approximately in earnest for about five years since starting in 2020. We've, City Council has discussed other viable legal and equitable revenue sources, and believe that City Council is well aware of what other options it has relating to taking care of this significant issue. Also, City Council should consider the time, effort, and expense invested since 2020, and that includes the assessments that we've completed, the work by outside consultants, and also y'all's time, City staff's time. But with that, I believe, yes, that's where I'll pause and open it up for decision number one.
Give me things, Ryan. Okay. All right, Council, do you have some things you'd like to say? Do we want to continue with figuring out if this is a viable project? However we do it, whether it's the way that it was originally written or some variation thereof, do we want to continue with this process?
I would like to continue with the process, but a modified rate schedule for businesses.
I can hear. You have something, Jack?
It needs to be a big modification for businesses. I mean, the numbers that we were, we had presented to all the town halls aren't going to work at all.
All right, so the consensus would be continue forward.
All right. Okay, so let's move quickly into decision two. The question is, should there be a residential fee adjustment? Recall, City Council's current direction is to establish that for discussion purposes, that residential fee at $10 per single-family equivalent. Would like to highlight that every dollar reduction of the SFE fee equates to the decrease of approximately $278,500 annually. And the reduction of that base fee reduces, results in a reduction in all accounts, because this is the baseline multiplier for all of those accounts. So it does affect both residential and non-residential revenues alike.
Counsel.
Scott, I guess my question is, if it's reduced, and we look at a $278,500 deficit, which means that less streets can be maintained at the level that they need to be maintained at, is there a force multiplier in there that because that is not, that money's not raised, that overall condition deteriorates, therefore the cost to renovate's going to be much more expensive in the long run?
Yes, Mayor, there is a direct correlation between deferred maintenance and the cost of that maintenance or rehabilitation or reconstruction once you reach that level. But just to remind City Council, the original draft estimated approximately $3 million in revenue, based on the original assessment. To move that or to turn that trend around from going down to going up to a 70 PCI, we would need about $4.6 million a year, and that was back in 2022. With that being said, and I've had this discussion many times with various council members and others, this doesn't need to be the entire solution of this problem. Right now, you have a quarter cent sales tax allocation, which makes up 1.3 million. Right now with this, you would, you know, if everything was left as is, you would see another $3 million net revenue per year, so that's 4.3. You're getting closer to that benchmark. But again, this doesn't have to be the entire solution to this, quite frankly, a monumental issue that we have. But just recognize with that 278, that would be, if nothing else was changed, just that $1 reduction, say it moved from 10 to 9, you would take $278,500 away from that 3 million. So that's basically the correlation that we have.
But we're also talking about modifying. that because that is not, that money's not raised, that overall condition deteriorates, therefore the cost to renovate is going to be much more expensive in the long run?
Yes, Mayor, there is a direct correlation between deferred maintenance and the cost of that maintenance or rehabilitation or reconstruction, once you reach that level. But just to remind city council, the original draft estimated approximately $3 million in revenue. Based on the original assessment, to move that or to turn that trend around from going down to going up to a 70 PCI, we would need about $4.6 million a year, and that was back in 2022. With that being said, and I've had this discussion many times with various council members and others, this doesn't need to be the entire solution of this problem. Right now, you have a quarter cent sales tax allocation, which makes up 1.3 million. Right now with this, you would, you know, if everything was left as is, you would see another $3 million net revenue per year. So that's 4.3. You're getting closer to that benchmark. But again, this doesn't have to be the entire solution to this, quite frankly, a monumental issue that we have. But just recognize with that 278, that would be, if nothing else was changed, just that $1 reduction, say it moved from 10 to 9, you would take $278,500 away from that 3 million. So that's basically the correlation that we have.
But we're also talking about modifying the business assessments greatly. And that's going to further decrease that.
It would be, right. And that's as we get into, excuse me, decision three, we'll talk specifically about non-residential and a proposal that city staff would like city council to consider on that side.
Council, can you express some opinions on what you?
I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
In regards to the residential fee, not necessarily reducing it all across the board, but taking into consideration those that do live on set, limited incomes and not being able to afford $10 or $9 or, you know, even down to maybe a dollar is still a lot for these individuals. So I think there needs to be some adjustment to that respect.
And if I may, that may be better suited for decision number four when we get into exemptions, potentially exemptions. And I've heard, you know, basically the same comments too. Any fee is too much. And I think that's a reality in parts of our society at this time. There's other utilities that residents have to pay for, water, wastewater, solid waste, drainage, things of that nature. And unfortunately, folks don't, some folks don't have enough to pay their utility bill on a monthly basis. There is, you know, assistance programs out there that I think help some of these folks through that. But again, it may be better tailored to have that discussion there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few comments, but I'm going to wait till we get further down with the different type of decisions we have to make.
All right. So do you need a decision on this particular deal, whether to keep $10 as the baseline?
That's what I'm looking for. We could always come back to this. I've tried to keep this very step-by-stepy. So, but at the same time, if you want to get through the non-residential aspects and come back to this, we can do that as well.
I do have a question. When we were talking about water utility bills years ago, we weren't allowed to give a discount because it's a utility. And it's against state law. So I don't know if that would affect this utility.
And if I may, I think the concept of it is valid, even if you would compare it or bring that logic across the board to this particular fee. In essence, you're treating the members of the same class of customers in a different way. And that's why the, I believe it's the utility code prohibits that in the context of water and wastewater. We don't have a similar statutory prohibition for that here, but I believe the logic follows that approach, that that would be something that is probably discouraged.
Councilmember Smith, I would fully agree with what Mr. Osborne just said.
Yes, because no one's tested it yet, I think is the answer. And it is a utility fee.
Correct.
And we're not allowed to discount certain groups of people.
Well, you can, you can discount all you want as long as it applies to the entire customer class.
Yes.
As it's defined in our.
So residential, we can't say one group of residences.
Yeah, it'd have to be all residences.
Yes.
So are we looking, at least at this point, leaving it at $10 fee?
So right, Mr. Mayor, if I may, right now, what we're looking to decide on is a $10 single-family equivalent monthly fee appropriate?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody okay with that at this point? Okay.
Yes, support.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can just provide some, a quick statement on this. Yes, we are asking for the decision on this because after tonight, we're going to revise the ordinance. And we are trying to get that ordinance and as a final condition and make sure that when we bring it to you, we're not having to go back through these discussions again. So that's why we're taking the time to do it tonight, so that we can get those direct, that direction now, so that when we bring a final document to you, it is exactly what you want.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to add something else. If it is deciding on this $10, I believe that is a high mark to set for everybody across the board, starting out. I fully understand that something has to be done about our streets and that the money has to come from somewhere. But I also understand that this is taking the community by surprise of a $10 increase. I would like to consider something, maybe half of that, $5. And then review it over the years, I would say annually. I know that's coming up later on and looking at possible increases gradually over time.
If we decrease it to $5 and that's over.
It's over a billion dollars.
Over a billion, right there. I'm not sure how much that accomplishes, but. Can you get some comments?
Well, it's a lot more than we've, than we have right now. You know what I mean?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I just asked for a few minutes. And I'll be the first to tell you, I don't want to pay this fee, but I understand the necessity, and we need it, okay? I don't know what the previous administrations in the city's done to the council staff, I'm not laying a blame on no one, but we need to move forward. The growth is coming this way. And I've understood what the small businesses said, it's too high, or close us down. But at the same time, we don't have decent roads. We're also not going to get new and big businesses in town, especially a lot of them that requires the weight requirements for some of their trucks. Okay, this is just me saying this. Let's say if we went from 10 to $8. Now, correct me if my math's wrong, Scott. That's around, go over half a million dollars, okay? I know that still hurts. I could be willing to go down to 8, but I'll be honest, 10 don't get us close to where we need. We got to start somewhere. And I would just say, once we get through these decisions, then come back and re-look at this maybe, which I know it's in one decision areas, but come back and look at it every five years. That way, it's locked in, and then we just come back at a later date. Again, that's just my two cents. And then the businesses, I can live with the $20. I just, I just try to get it all out and up for myself.
Anybody?
Mr. Mayor, I can feel comfortable with 8. If I look at the surrounding community, we're at 10 on the east, and then we got about 7 on the, I think 7 for limpasses. So if we go about 8, I think that sets us up pretty fairly.
Anybody else?
Sean?
Mr. Mayor, Scott, do we have anything that shows a phased approach? I think I heard that mentioned. I mean, obviously, you'd have to change the math over time to meet that, but as we phase it in, that gap, I mean, I like the idea of a phased approach. It's easier to swallow. I know it's coming. I know in a year or two, I'm going to add another dollar or another dollar. But I'm curious how wide that gap gets if we don't get on it. Have you looked at that at all?
Right, the phased approach, phased implementation approach has not been looked at in any great detail because that was not the direction we were provided at the time. Not saying that we couldn't look into that at council's direction. However, once again, with the numbers that are on the table right now, we're starting at 3, along with the 1.3 sales tax allocation, you're at 4.3. You need about $4.722 to start making that trend. That being said, 4.3 is going to substantially slow down or stabilize that condition. You may not be making headway, but you're going to stabilize the condition. You're going to see a lot of work out in the community based on that amount. But relating to a phased approach, Mr. Havelaw, I don't believe we received that direction.
But that's something we could consider after. We can make a decision. And if we're talking 8 or whatever that dollar is, and we can start to put the groundwork for a phased approach going forward to get us where we need to be. I think knowing that, the public might be able to stomach that a little better. That's just my thought.
And if you don't mind me responding there.
Go ahead.
The phased approach, this street maintenance utility, based on what we've prepared and what we've presented, quite honestly, is a phased approach because it's not going to generate the revenue sufficient based on the studies we completed to get us to the 70 PCI in 10 years. That was the goal. That was what council said, this is what we would like to see. But even based on the information we presented in the town halls, it's not going to get us there. What we get to decision number three, which is the non-residential fee, which, again, that was the number one concern that we heard in the town halls. And the alternate that we're going to present to council and that we've published on the website is not going to get us there in 10 years either. So is it a phased approach? Absolutely it is. But as councilmember Smith said, the direction that council gives us, one, you've already given us direction that we should proceed. So we're proceeding. And whatever direction you give us to us on the residential fee, and then eventually the non-residential fee and exemptions and the information in the ordinance, it's more than where we're at right now. And we will see each year that we present to council, this is what we accomplished, this was the revenue that was brought in to accomplish the work that we did. You're going to start seeing as the governing body how successful the street maintenance utility is. We've already talked about the fact that we started with a 60 PCI at the beginning of 2022. We're at the middle of 2025, almost towards the end of 2025 now, and we've already dropped to a 58 PCI. And that's with doing some level of work over those years. But we're, it's still, we're still seeing that slip. So I understand that you're saying, let's come out with a more formal approach, and that's great, we can definitely do that. But I think for the facts of what we've presented and what we've gone through, it's clearly a phased approach, yes.
And I didn't mean to get us off track. I apologize for that. Because we need to make a decision.
If I'm understanding everything, 4.3 just keeps us where we are.
Well, it's, is somewhere in that range. So the 4.6, again, $20,22, which equates to probably about 5.2 at this point. 4.3 is going to go a long way to maintaining that level that we have now and potentially making a little bit of headway. That hasn't been modeled or analyzed. But it starts, it starts you doing, doing a lot more than what we've been doing now, what we have the resources to do now to start making some headway.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Scott, I have a question. If we change this dollar value from $10 to anything else that's lower than 10, are we going to be able to meet that 10-year goal of 70% with this $10 number?
No, even with this $10 number, based on the current draft, you'll only recover that $3 million.
Okay, so that means that right now, we're looking at a 20-year plan to get up to 70% PCI?
Potentially 15, 20 years, yeah.
And if we lower it, we're just stretching that out further?
We're just dragging it out.
That is a correct statement.
And how long has street maintenance been deferred through different city councils over the past, let's say, 20 years?
And I've only been here five.
Okay.
All I'm familiar with is the budget that I manage through my streets department. Back in '22, that budget was about 1.7 million. After that, it has increased and decreased based on the reserves we had generated from the sales tax and ultimately utilized for projects. As you're aware, in this adopted fiscal year budget, there is zero indicated outside of basic operation and maintenance, the day-to-day activities of that street maintenance crew. So in essence, this year is at $1.3 million. You're not going to see very little headway, if anything, out there.
Okay. So we're going to maintain what we have today if we lower this $10 amount? We're going to be worse off.
Right, based on all of the numbers.
20 or 30 years, or 40 years.
At the $10 amount, yeah, you're getting close to that goal that city council set in terms of funding that will decrease that, you know, that trend upwards by how much, I haven't run that analysis at this point. But it would trend up based on that 4.3, just not as significantly as the 4.6.
Thanks, Scott.
This has been a, I want to say more like a two-faced approach in that we only can, revenue is only X number of dollars. And so we've had deferred maintenance on our infrastructure as far as water and sewer. And roads is another component of that. The water and sewer has demanded that we put more resources towards getting those items taken care of because they are critical to our infrastructure and our growth. Roads, you kind of play with a little bit in that, you know, some of it's going to get pushed down the road. Deferred, let me put it that way. You know where I was going. But the bottom, you know, so the bottom line is, you only have so much resources to make the things work that need to work. And we are a growing city, and we have had to put a lot of money into our infrastructure as far as water, sewer, everything else that involves in our waste, in our wastewater system and everything else. And so now we're trying to catch up a little bit with roads. And it's going to take an effort to maintain where we are, not only maintain where we are, but to meet the growth that happens. You know, one of the comments that was made was that we couldn't, if small businesses were going to close, and I'm not going to say whether that will or won't happen, but I will say that I, you can, everybody can be a realist and realize that if the roads are in bad shape, you're not going to attract new businesses. And you're not going to make your community grow. So they all go hand in hand with making things happen. And our city has done a lot with less. But the time has come to where we're trying to address what's going to happen between now and in the future. Things that were done years, you know, decades ago, decisions that were made decades ago are kind of coming full term, and we're having to deal with that. And we're trying to deal with that the best that we possibly can. So I just want to get that out there so that people understand that it's not just willy-nilly, that this has been a process of allocating funds to things that are needed the most first to make sure that we function as a city the way that should. the most first to make sure that we function as a city the way that should. Kervin, was that a good enough sermon there?
It's close.
Okay. So where do we go?
Mr. Mayor.
Council.
I would just like to say that I support ten dollars, and I am willing to go down to eight.
Okay, let's, okay, everybody okay?
I'll support eight.
With looking at it, leaving it at ten right now, going through the rest of the decision-making process.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll leave it at ten.
Everybody good? Okay.
So that was eight.
Leaving it at ten.
Leaving it at ten for now. Okay. All right. Moving into the, quickly into decision three, this is, as we've stated, the biggest area of concern that was advanced during the town halls through the individual correspondence, et cetera. What you will see here is the current rate structure. On the left here, you see the bands, one through eleven. You see the caps on those bands and also the average trips associated with those bands. And the build trips correspond to those average trips. That results in the current draft fees, which has received a lot of concern, obviously, especially as you go lower on this scale down to an ultimate cap as city council established at a twenty-five-hundred-dollar fee. Various points that were brought up during the town hall really related to the equitability of this twenty-five-hundred-dollar artificial cap. And that was very well received by city staff because ultimately, this twenty-five-hundred-dollar cap benefits the largest business in town the most. That cap, the benefit of that cap was not carried throughout the rest of these bands as we went up to a base fee amount of twenty dollars. So with that, the amount between the largest companies' actual generated trips, which was about eleven-sixty-nine, and the amount here is about two-hundred-and-fifty, that equates to approximately seventy-nine percent. Actually, the inverse figure here is point-two-one-three-eight. So city staff's proposal, and I've discussed this with Mr. Havelaw and a couple members of city council, is to take this amount, this point-two-one-three-eight, and move that benefit throughout these non-residential bands. In essence, what that does, it takes it from a fee of eighteen-twenty-five down to three-ninety on that top end. The twenty-five-hundred would be the actual times that multiplier and so forth and so on, down to basically a minimum fee of twenty dollars that would include the first three bands. With that, going back to the comparison that we saw earlier, right now, Copper's Cove on the left at the current rate structure fee compared to these three communities, and this is the result on this side, of what that comparison would look like after that one revision would be made. So with that, that is one way to equitably and proportionally carry that reduction throughout those bands, again, to attempt to bring those bands back down to an amount that would likely be a lot more received in this non-residential community. So going through that, if that alternate rate structure was adopted, you see I've highlighted bands one through three through six. The maximum on band six would be seventy-two dollars and seventy cents per month. This represents about, almost eighty percent of all non-residential customers would be below that seventy-two. For the twenty-dollar, the minimum, you're looking at about half of the non-residential entities would be at that amount. As you ratchet up to the bands nine, some of the heavier trip generators in town, you see the customer accounts start to significantly drop. Band nine, for instance, has twenty-nine businesses falling within that range. Bands ten and eleven, there's approximately eighteen businesses that fall into those highest two tiers. So with that, that is the proposal that city, or city staff would like city council to discuss at this point and see if that's maybe moving in the right direction, or if you have any questions about that analysis.
Counsel.
Scott, I do got one question. Could you give me example between band seven and up to band eleven?
Band seven and band eleven?
Right, from seven to eleven.
Okay.
Are you saying what would be an example of band seven?
What would be an example?
Band seven, as you see over here, you have approximately sixty-one-point-three average trips. You'd basically be looking at a smaller restaurant with about fifteen-hundred square feet, approximately that number. A band, what was your other one you said, band eleven?
Seven, oh, we're down to eleven.
Eleven would be your HEB, would be your synergy, would be your Walmart, some of the larger gas stations in town with the multiple fuel pumps because that's what that trip generation is based on in the current analysis.
Okay, what would be a business example for eight, nine, and ten?
I would have to go back to the analysis to tell you those specific businesses. But basically, it's based on that, again, that average trip generation. And each business has been put into the various bands across the board based on their trip generation, unit variables.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So with this, while you're considering that propose or that analysis, here's some other analysis that really shows a, another way to show this, you have the number of accounts over here, and you have the relative band. So you can see primarily that's front end. And then you have basically the amount of that. Correspondingly, you have these bands that make up about that seventy-nine-point-five percent. They're within, under that seventy-two-dollar range for this assessment. The net result, or the impact of a structure such as this, results in an annual net revenue decrease of approximately one point two million dollars. That brings that original three million dollars down to the figure shown, or about one point eight-five million per year. Again, that would be dedicated exclusively for this street maintenance and this effort to start maintaining the city's network more effectively through these additional resources. Combined with that sales tax, again, the concept of this being the total solution, I'd like to bring that up. Potentially, this is not the complete solution to this problem. Potentially, we look at some of these, some of these basically failed roadways and package those together in a potential debt issuance that gets us along the way on those projects with that debt service being paid for out of this street maintenance. It could extend our effectiveness through that. Potentially, you know, as the city continues to grow, there may be an allocation from general fund that eventually could be contributed to this direction. But with that, I just wanted to show you the impact of what that looks like in terms of that revenue impact, and then once again, open it up for questions on your end.
Counsel, questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have one comment. I do like this, it was what, twenty-one-point-three-eight percent being applied throughout the bands. It seems to really lessen the burden on some of those small businesses that we're speaking of having to go out of business or relocate or sell. So thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
It's significant that the, based on the one through six bands, that that's eighty percent of all non-residential accounts, so that's a huge portion of that that's showed a significant decrease. I guess my question is, do we, is, from counsel's standpoint, is this seem like a option that we could live with?
Yes, sir.
Is there another calculation available for us to look at?
We still have another option.
I'd like to look at all the options first.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so this is, you're right, I forgot about option two. We're going to get an option two now. Okay, so let's see. Along with, my apologies, along with that option one that I just presented, I do want to bring up some further adjustments that city council could make to this model and other adjustments that city staff has already taken the lead on making these adjustments. The first one is the concept of a bypass single-family equivalent trip reduction. What bypass trips are, they are recognized by some transportation engineers to further offset the generated trips from specific segments of businesses. And I've indicated a variety of what those would look like, and that's based on the concept of a bypass trip. If you think of a bypass trip, for example, somebody leaves their home, they're going to HEB. On the way, they stop by, they get a coffee, they, you know, fill up with gas, but then continue on their way to their primary destination. That trip to that gas station or even a daycare to drop your children off is not counted, and that's where these bypass single-family trip reductions come into play. The reason these are not factored into a lot of these types of analysis are really the sparsity of actual reliable survey data. There is bypass numbers in the ITE manual. However, the surveys that were conducted, they were conducted on a very limited basis, and they're quite aged. That being said, other communities such as Colleen, such as Waco, utilize these to really tailor these rate structures to their community. So from city staff's perspective, we're looking at potentially a reduction further of that single-family equivalent trip generation by the percentages shown for, basically, the entities shown. In essence, there's about, all in, there's about seventy businesses that this would directly affect with that offset. The total net annual revenue reduction based on this, along with option one, if you were to move forward with option one and then do this as well, would be another one hundred and forty-four thousand annually per year to make these adjustments. However, as you look at some of these daycares, for example, the city currently has ten daycares. If you think about how a daycare works, a lot of that is that bypass scenario where you drop your kids off, you move on to work, or you move on to HEB, or go do your shopping, or something of that nature. Similar to these other ones, restaurants with and without drive-throughs, maybe you're stopping at McDonald's on your way to, you know, the mall or HEB or something of that effect. So these corresponding amounts have been pulled out of that ITE, and they've also been based on corresponding or neighboring communities, what they did with their percentages. So it's to really massage within these bands, these type of nuances. So with that, the other thing we're looking at here is a trip generation focus. Originally, if you recall, this rate structure, this model was based on the way the city set up the drainage utility. So the accounts that, excuse me, were assessed, that drainage utility were the baseline for this analysis. But looking at the purpose of the drainage utility, and that's to really assess for that impervious cover or that increased stormwater the city has to manage, this relates to trips. So assessing this fee to a overall property owner through a master meter account isn't as applicable as, say, a drainage fee would be on that basis. There's a lot of uses around town, for example, in Town Center or Colonial Plaza, where you have one big property owner, and then you have individual businesses that have their own individual water meters and their own utility bills. If you assess it to the big property owner, basically, they're being assessed based on the entirety. But what happens when their units go vacant, i.e., there's no trip generation happening at that section, but their fee would remain the same? If you assess this against the actual unit leaseurs, that's going to reflect those vacancy rates over time. And that's a similar thing with multifamily. We have a couple of large complexes in town that have those individual water meters in utility accounts with their residents rather than that property owner. So that's something city staff has continued to work on into this model, but I wanted you to be aware of it. We believe that's a better way to get at that situation. And finally, in practice, the appeals process, and we've had various discussions with a variety of different businesses, you know, one of the overall things is not every auto parts, sales and service store is the same. Not every coffee shop is the same. Just like to remind city council that we do have this draft provision, the appeals process, in the draft ordinance. As you can see down here, one of the reasons they can apply for one is to demonstrate that the category of land use or quantity of use variables used in calculating the fee for the benefited property is incorrect. City staff's position is that we should encourage these appeal processes to really get down to what is the nature of that business. For example, we have a coffee shop up on North Main that although it's a relatively large business or large building, the coffee shop portion of it is a very small footprint. If you actually go in there, they don't serve much coffee each day. So if we look at the reality of that building, really, that assessment should be more limited to the square footage of that operation as that may develop over time. So those are some of the things that city staff wants to have the discretion, and it's in this draft ordinance, to marry up reality with what we're reflecting here. Are there any questions on the bypass trip productions or the trip generation or the appeals process?
The one question I have is, so the little coffee shop on Main compares directly to like a Starbucks?
Yes, ma'am.
They would have had the same fee?
Very close. Yes, ma'am. And again, that doesn't reflect the reality of what's happening here.
Right.
So I think that would be. Unless there are specific questions on these, we can move into option two and then bounce back here, and I can get this direction on this.
Hey, Scott, can you back up to the rate structure with the different bands? Yeah, that one right there is good. Yeah, that one right there is good. So, Mr., Mr. Treadaway asked for some examples, and I only have a few, but ban six, that would include Spicer's, Nelson Brew Works, Cove Theater, Urban Ernie's. Ban seven would include Mr. Carwash, House on Main, but we just talked about that one. Ban nine would include Black Meg.
Thank you.
Okay. So, if I may, proceed to option two, for the alternate funding for the non-residential. It was asked that we, we take a look at just simply establishing a monthly fee of twenty dollars across all non-residential uses, similar to what you see in Lampasses, that establishes one fee for residence, one fee for commercial, and it's all the same, currently set at seven dollars per utility account. So, if you look at twenty dollars per month across four hundred and ninety-four non-residential accounts, that generates approximately that nine, nine thousand eight hundred per month, or about a hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred per year. This would reduce the current model's net revenue by about one point five million. It would also change the proportionality from its current amount, which is about fifty fifty based on the, the draft, but the proportionality would be, residential would be contributing ninety-two point six versus seven point four percent, and would generate only approximately one point four million annually. So, with that, I'll, I'll stop there and open up for questions.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question for Scott. This is a reference to the school district. Do you know exactly how many campuses they have?
I believe it's, um...
Eleven, thank you. So, that would be twenty dollars per campus then?
And, and again, we may wanna talk about that in the exemption category, revisiting that exemption category.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Where would the school district fall in option one?
In option one, let's see, they would, and Ryan, do you wanna, I guess, take a segue and talk about our discussion with the superintendent?
Yeah, if, if we were to simply apply option, the options to CCISD as it currently sits, yeah, they would fall into band eleven for all their campuses, based on the square footage that exists, and the participation that exists in all those schools. But we have already sat down with Dr. Hawkins and had a direct discussion with him, and that actually will apply in decision four on exemptions, where we need to have a more direct discussion about CCISD in particular. It is a governmental entity, it, it is a taxing entity, so some direct consideration council needs to give to that organization. So, if, if we could hold off on further discussing that till we get the exemptions, I think we could get through decision number three first.
So, is the question, do we, do we want to consider a flat twenty-dollar fee, or go back to the, the scenario that you had that kinda modified?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor? I'm for alternate funding, option two.
I support.
Twenty, twenty-dollar flat fee?
Yes.
I support.
Support.
Okay, Scott, based on this option here, we're taking the ten-year plan and turn it into a fifty-year plan?
It would have to be based on what additional resources the city's able to develop right now with the one point four, combine that with the one point three, you're sitting at two seven, you're, even on that twenty, the twenty-two numbers, you're undershooting what you need by two million dollars per year to make that incline to the goal that city council established at that seventy PCI.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I know this is not a perfect plan, and I understand that, but at least this is a start to get us down the road, and then come back in the future and relook at this.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to say, when we actually put down, we wanted to go to seventy, that was like the top that we could actually go. That was just something to see, let's just throw out numbers, so it doesn't, we were anywhere like a sixty between, at that time, we were at a sixty-five?
Sixty.
A sixty, okay. So, we could've actually directed the city to go maybe sixty-eight or sixty-seven, and those numbers would've looked differently, but since we directed them just to do seventy, that's why we see these large numbers. And so, for right now, for a non-residential, a flat fee of twenty dollars, and residential, I'm, I'm basically support the residential for ten dollars as well.
So, you're in favor of the residential at ten dollars?
And the, and the non-residential for twenty dollars?
And so, the residential is gonna carry ninety-two point six percent of the burden, and non-residential businesses will carry seven point four percent. Is that, am I reading that right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm not in favor, I don't like the looks of that percentage, but that's the actuality of it, I get that.
I know, I'm kinda missing where that's very fair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm more in favor of the option one, where it's tiered in that large percentage rate, that the biggest ones is inferred across the board, so that bans one through six, or, or one through three are at twenty dollars, and I'm in favor of that.
Which is eighty percent of, of the businesses?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I am also in favor of option one.
I'm in favor of option one.
I'm in favor of option one.
Option one. All the way back.
Do we have calculations of what the burden is on residential versus commercial on option one?
Let me pull up something else here real quick, and see if I can get you to it.
Thank you.
As you can see, that basically this is in a secondary draft model that reflects the same amounts that we were looking at. If you look at, over here, you basically have annual, you'd have about one point three million on residential, and about six hundred and two. Again, this model is not complete, it overstates this revenue by approximately eighty-five thousand dollars, because that last ban has not been modified to reflect the scenario presented, but the percentages are basically two to one here.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and just, just some quick math, based on what's in there, is, that's, that's fairly accurate with what Scott has just presented.
Right. Does that address your question?
Looking at that model where it says the net revenues for the unbanded, right above it?
Yes.
What does that mean?
That is, if we did not establish bans, and it was a straight calculation based on actual individual trip generation...
So, that's the original number?
That's the original number, before it was placed into bans, correct. So, that is, based on this ten-dollar fee, that is the maximum amount this program could, could recover as, as originally configured.
Comments?
I have a comment. In attending all the meetings, I did hear on several occasions, many of the business owners were in favor of paying some sort of fee, and as long as they had time for the business to assess the fee going forward into the future, knowing that this would be a permanent lasting, possibly increasing fee, a majority of the people I spoke to were okay with it, in the understanding it was going only to street maintenance.
Yeah. Okay, John, you said you were in favor of rate structure, option one?
Option one is, are these numbers with or without this bypass rate?
No, the numbers that are shown are not incorporating this, so those bans would be further, segments of those bans would be further reduced based on those trip reductions here. So, we would make those final calculations if city council would like me to, across those industries, and ultimately provide that in the final analysis if we move forward to that Oc- October twenty-first calculation. So, it, it would be calculated and put in those packets, if that's your direction.
And there's no bypass trip reduction for grocery stores?
No, ma'am, there wasn't.
So, can we get a with and without, option one with and without the bypass?
Yeah, you just subtract one hundred and forty-four thousand.
Subtract one hundred and forty-four.
Okay.
I, I like to add the bypass with option one.
Anybody else, questions, comments?
I, I support the second option, Mr. Mayor.
Support option two, the twenty-dollar flat fee?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else? Sean, you said, option one with bypass?
Option one with the bypass.
Okay.
Straight up option one for me.
Option one with, without bypass?
Without.
Without bypass, straight, option one.
Yep.
Option one with bypass.
Keeping it below that?
Uh, yes, sir.
I can't handle that.
Option one without the bypass?
Option one straight.
Straight.
Dale?
Sir?
Option two?
Option two, Mr. Mayor.
Option two, Mr. Mayor.
I still support option two, but if I have to, if, if it goes the other way, I'd rather have the bypass also.
Okay.
When it comes to us, I mean, it's already for, or for the option one.
Well, there's four that they're saying, option one.
Right.
You're saying with bypass?
With bypass.
You're saying without?
If that's gonna be my only option.
Can we, can we live with bypass?
Sure.
Okay. Option one with bypass.
Tracking. Okay, and I appreciate council staying with me here, we're, we're getting close to the end on these discussions. As we discussed just briefly earlier, through this town hall public engagement, there were requests for city council to reconsider the direction it provided to city staff back in February of twenty-four relating to exemptions. As you recall, the draft ordinance currently has no exemptions except for city facilities, but considerations that, that came up at those town halls, and also through those individual meetings are listed to include governmental entities such as CCISD, county, state, and federal entities, nonprofit entities, which would include your churches, your other nonprofit entities, five oh one, three C, new businesses. One concept that came up is maybe there is a limited period of time, whether that's a year or two, when new businesses come to town where they would be exempted from this fee until that, that business started to establish itself. That type of exemption is provided in a couple of these analysis in other communities within Texas. It's, it's not across the board by any means, or any other, other exemptions that were brought to city council's consideration or attention that they would like to revisit. But I would like to touch on governmental entities, and just reiterate what Mr. Haverlaw stated about these type of entities. When you have CCISD, and they have eleven schools in various other facilities, Bus Barns, et cetera, that generate traffic on top of that, their direct trip generation is by and far the hugest, or the largest traffic generator operation in this city, in excess of, you know, basically twenty-one hundred single-family equivalent trips. If you did the straight math on that, that's, you know, twenty-one thousand per month over the course of the year, that's a hundred and forty-four. We sat down with Dr. Brent Hawkins, and we talked to him about the, the concept of this program, talked to him about potentially an artificial cap with the school district set at five thousand dollars per month for those discussion purposes. Mr. Hawkins was very candid with Ryan and myself about the state of CCISD's budgetary limitations, and really what amount they have left of just kinda quote-unquote discretionary funds for other purposes. He made the equation, if we were at five thousand assessed per year, that's about sixty thousand per, per year. Dr. Hawkins equated that to a teacher's salary. So, obviously, that is the reality, what this looks like on CCISD. As, as Ryan had mentioned, if this is assessed against another taxing entity, it follows logically that to actually cover this, they need to take, take care of that through the taxes they impose upon the community. Ultimately, it's a pass-through to the residents of this community based from another taxing entity. I think a similar logic can be followed, not only with county facilities, whether that's the county annex, state facilities within the city, or federal facilities such as the post office, off of D. That same logic follows with that, so I want city council's consideration of this potential exemption in any direction you have along there.
Does Colleen exempt KISD?
I believe they do, yes, ma'am. And, and many communities actually exempt these, these governmental entities from these, from these models for this, this reason.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to definitely exempt CCISD and nonprofit entities.
Anybody else? Yes.
I, I agree, but I, I also think to attract new businesses, given that limited time period, was, might be attractive to them, I don't know if Sean or Fred feel that way, but I like the idea of that, it's, it's limited, they're still gonna pay at some point, but I like that to attract growth here.
Do we need to decide that, for a year?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say I am for the exemptions of the CCISD, the nonprofits, and a limited time period for new businesses.
What would that be? A year? Two years?
I would say add it into when we review, like, get a yearly review of how the program is going, how the funds are being utilized, and that would give them a whole, whole year, get settled, know that they're coming in, adjust their... their base accordingly to be fully prepared for it.
I feel a year would be the good timeframe.
I feel two would be good.
You what?
Two, two years. Only because most businesses fail in the first year and I don't wanna be the cause of that.
That's fair.
Because that would be for also like tractors supply, you'd give a two-year?
I'd let the EDC negotiate that.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and agree with the exemptions. But two years on a new business is good, but I would suggest we do not come back every year and look at this, maybe every between three and five years, maybe four or five years.
We're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Hart?
I'm okay with new business exemptions. To be clear, I was only talking about CCISD, not county, state, and federal.
I'm with you on that one.
Okay.
I'm with you on that as well.
Okay.
Well, let me take that back. I would, I would say CCISD and county because those are both taxing entities here for the same reason, but state has already taken enough and federal definitely takes enough.
I agree with John on that.
Okay. CCISD and county?
I'm good with that.
Nonprofit entities? Well, how would they, would they, how would you assess whether they're nonprofit or not?
We'll come up with some language to place in the ordinance of requirements to prove and continue to prove that you're a nonprofit entity functioning in accordance with relevant laws.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, it should be consistent with how we do nonprofit reduction, the rental of the Civic Center, which is documentation that they haven't established five oh one C three.
Would that apply to a church that had a daycare?
That was my question.
Would that daycare be covered as a five oh one C three?
I think it would be based, based on the primary business or entity of that location.
Got it.
Scott, I do got one question.
Yes, sir.
Let's say a nonprofit, they run it out their house, okay, and they request nonprofit where they don't have to pay. So I'm assuming they don't pay the residential fee either?
Well, we're talking about exemptions, I believe, on the non-residential side, so this would be exclusively for the non-residential.
It goes back to the primary purpose and use of that property. It's a residential property, so they would pay the residential fee.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. Would the appeals process also apply? The appeals process?
Mm-hmm.
That also applies throughout, like the exemption process?
The exemption process would be its own process. The appeals process would be, for example, say we have a business identified as general retail and sales, it's actually a nonprofit company that's seeking an exemption. So that company would approach the city either through that appeals process or through most legitimately through an exemption process. So there will be language in here about how to obtain that exemption and what that process looks like.
Outside of the appeals process?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, where are we? Go ahead.
So if I, just because this one had multiple items on it, we were talking about multiple things. So I understand there is a consensus on providing exemption for CCISD and county properties?
Yes.
Everybody good for that? Okay.
Okay. And that there is a consensus on providing exemptions for nonprofit use properties?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, okay, okay. And then their support for exemptions for new businesses, I'm not sure, is it one year or two years?
I say two.
I'll go with two.
I can support two.
Okay. And as Mr. Osborne is the master of words, we'll come up with language on that.
Thank you, sir. All right.
All right, decision five, reaching the final decision here, program evaluation period. Once again, during the town halls, there was a lot of discussion about can, can this just be limited for a period of years? Can the amount that's assessed be limited for that period? I believe the response provided by Mr. Haverlaw was this, this City Council can adopt anything into its ordinance, however, another city council in the future can change that ordinance. So although there's no way to guarantee, there are other communities that take a look at these type of programs on a annualized or biannual basis, basically to take a look at the metrics or what has been achieved for the revenue that has been secured. So the question is, would City Council like a provision placed in this ordinance for City Council to review this incrementally on a, by year basis? And the follow-up question would be, what would those reporting requirements be? Because that would come from city staff whenever this period is, as in the form of a presentation to show City Council and in our citizens what has been accomplished with those funds over a given period.
I'm thinking two years, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Especially to begin with, I think you wanna do it pretty short to see the success or failure and then basically you can adjust based on that.
What is the metric on the success or failure? Well, I mean, what? We've already, we've already taken ten years and moved it out to forty. So what is that metric? Or is it, is it a dollar amount spent on roads at this point? Or, because it can't be a PCI. PCI is, I mean, to me, PCI is out of the question with this plan.
Because it can't be achieved.
So it, yeah, it can't be achieved in this room's lifetime.
So the question would be?
Hey, I'm gonna be around.
We're gonna get you for a long time.
See you in fifty years.
Yeah.
So, go ahead. If I made Mr. Hale's point, I believe PCI could still be used as a benchmark in those metrics because what it's going to show you based on this reduced amount is how far it's come to stabilize in average condition or how far that continues to slide at the end of that period. For example, we started out with about a sixty PCI, we're down to about fifty-eight. We have the software to manage that asset, the entire system, and we can make those calculations. Everything we do out in that network is inputted into this database, so it wouldn't be an extreme effort to bring City Council that data and show them what has happened with that PCI.
So we've gone from sixty to fifty-eight in five years?
Correct.
And can we look at each year individually and see where that PCI went from a fifty-eight point six to a fifty-eight point two to a fifty-eight?
Going forward, we can look at it on an annualized basis to see what that trend looks like.
And is that something that we would evaluate as a city or we would have to outsource that to somebody to reevaluate?
No, that's something we would evaluate internally, I would say, for probably another three or four years. At some point, we wanna reset that analysis to see what the then current condition is to continue to effectively manage that asset. But there will be updates in the, in the future related to that, but I think we're good for another three to four years in that regard.
So I think that most of the projects we're gonna know about because they're gonna be budgeted items that are gonna have to be approved? So I think progress, we're gonna see that automatically?
You will, but we can summarize and bring it together.
If we just did an annual update on all of the things that were done this fiscal year?
Right.
And then review every, I mean, five years is what I'm thinking. Because that was only two percent that we went down in five years. So I'm thinking review this every five years.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we, do we differentiate between a review and an evaluation? A review could be annually with the updates and a piece, an annual PCI that they can calculate, and in five years you reevaluate the entire program.
So you outsource that reevaluation?
At that point, you would need to because the software's expired.
Right.
Yes. But still have an annual review.
Well, I think we'll get an annual report.
Review report. Somebody's gonna report and we're gonna review it.
I'm just using the words on the screen.
And Mr. Mayor, here's my question.
Yes.
When you say review report, you're basically stating how much money's come in, where it's spent, what we've got accomplished. That's not counting reviewing the ordinance, correct?
That's correct. That would be done on a more, a longer basis.
To report annually and review the ordinance every two years?
I prefer three, but I'd go with two.
I like three.
I like three.
Okay.
Especially the first, the first time out, we could see, we will be able to kind of get a little bit, an idea of the success of what it's doing or if there's some tweaking that needs to be done, so. So everybody's three?
I'll go with that, sir.
For review?
I'm okay with that.
All right. Okay.
So Mayor, if it's okay, I'm just gonna summarize real quick. So on decision one, Council's overall decision was to proceed with the street maintenance utility program, which includes a fee. On decision two, City Council consensus was ten dollars a month per SFE, single-family equivalent. On decision three, there was a not full consensus, but a majority consensus for option one with bypass, calculations included. On option four, exemptions for CCISD, county, nonprofit, and new businesses, new businesses with a two-year timeline. And then option, decision five, was to review the ordinance every three years with a annual report. And I would just recommend that that annual report be provided to City Council at the budget planning timeline, which is the spring of every year. And all things financial are focused on, including reports and metrics related to those finances.
Agreed.
All right, thank you. Proceed, Scott.
All right, just to conclude it, this is the last slide, next steps, put them up on the board. We made it through bullet point one tonight. We will revise the draft ordinance based on your direction October twenty-first. Consider that finalized draft ordinance and associated fee schedule amendment as we've projected before. Start the assessment of this program in January of twenty-twenty-six at those far reduced rates, and that's if it's adopted in October. And then June twenty-twenty-six, our goal is to start the design of the first package of street rehabilitation projects and get those into construction as soon as possible. Any final questions of me?
Anybody?
Appreciate your, all your direction.
I have one question. I just want to clarify. When I was talking about the residents who possibly can't afford that minimum ten dollars, you said we would revisit it possible during exemptions. Now would they go through an appeal process, say, you know, someone elderly living on a fixed disability income that's below poverty?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Would there be support for eight dollars? That's my magic number. For the non-resi, for residential. If we had to change it.
She wants an exemption for...
I stand corrected, ma'am.
So, Ms. Trofus, in terms of providing exemption, we previously talked about, talked through that a while ago in terms of it's one customer class, which is residential. When consideration for exemptions or discounts are provided within a customer class, you step outside of state law in regards to other utilities that basically says that you're now discriminating, it's your base customer class for those that are receiving that discount or exemption that are specifically labeled as or within that residential class. So we previously went through this because City of Coppers Cove used to provide a discount for those that were seniors or sixty-five and over on their water utilities in wastewater and solid waste and drainage. We actually went through an entire legal review on that and City Council, after receiving that legal review, removed that discount because it was considered discriminatory by offering and applying that discount. It's very similar to what you're asking for at this point as well.
Okay, well then, I can agree with not having a discount after hearing of the review.
There are other avenues for people to apply it for assistance and stuff like that, and I think that's maybe where we're, that would be heading. All right, anything else? Council, this has been a very long and very sensitive and very, but a very, very necessary process, and I appreciate and applaud all of you for making important decisions for this, for our citizens, and for the future of Coppers Cove. So, thank you. All right, and thank you, Scott.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Scott.
All right, the time is seven twenty-nine. We will adjourn the workshop and we will begin the regular meeting at seven forty.